Ms. Vrella, do we have adequate sufficiency here to start?
Yes, we do, your worship. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much, and thanks, everybody, for coming out. I hereby call the public meeting for bylaw 4696 to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this District of Oak Bay Public Hearing. My name is Kevin Murdock. I'm the mayor of Oak Bay, and I'll be chairing tonight's public hearing on proposed bylaw 4696. I just want to start by acknowledging that the lands on which we gather is the traditional territories of the coast and straight Salish peoples. Specifically, we acknowledge the Lakongan-speaking people known today as the Isqamalt and the Songhe's First Nations, and that their historic connections to these lands continue to this day. Before we begin, I just want to advise that the public hearing is being live webcast, and recording will be archived on the district's website for future viewing. Personal information, including your image and personal opinions, may be collected and disclosed as part of council proceedings on the video. When presenting to council, if you're acting as a representative, excuse me, of a resident of Oak Bay or speaking of another party, please ensure you are not disclosing any personal information about the person if you don't have consent to do so. Our protocols, just want to outline some of the protocols that we have in place for our public hearings. First, I want to assure everybody that anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity to be heard. We're going to ask that initial comments be, limit your initial comments to a maximum of five minutes each, so that everyone has an opportunity to speak, and once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, those wishing to speak again may do so, ideally if you have new points to present. Please keep comments respectful of council, staff, and other members of the public, and withhold from cheering or jeering as much as possible in the course of the proceedings. All comments are to be directed to us, the mayor and council, and must relate to the proposed bylaw, and the purpose of the public hearing, of course, is to give council an opportunity to listen to the voice expressed by the public. This is not, unfortunately or fortunately, an opportunity to create an in-depth information, to provide the details of the application. That opportunity is available in the agenda package and through previous meetings and presentations, and with the staff reports available. For the information of those present tonight, a public hearing binder that contains all written submissions is available for review if anyone wishes to comment on those submissions, and where is that binder currently? Right here at the front table, if anybody wants to have a look at it. As a chair, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation made by any member of council or public or staff that does not relate to the proposed bylaw, is disrespectful to any other person, or is repetitive of views that the individual has already made, and, of course, council members are all here to listen to the opinions with an open mind. No one has prejudiced the outcome of this application. I'm going to just give a quick overview of the order of business, so everybody understands what we're doing here, because we've really formalized it into a seven-step process. So, to initiate, planning staff will introduce the proposed bylaw, and second, council will formally receive the written submissions that have been provided prior and are included in the package. Third, will receive any late submissions. They'll be read aloud if necessary. Fourth, the applicant will be invited to present their application. They're not obligated to do so, but we always invite them. Fifth, the council will ask, have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions of either the applicant or of staff. Sixth, the members of the public are then welcome to come forward and express what you have to say about this application, and then, at the end of that, we will be recessing this public hearing, and we'll have at least a five-minute break, if not more, and head into our council, scheduled council meeting following this meeting. So, with that, we actually kick off our meeting for real, and if I just invite staff to introduce the purpose of bylaw 4696, and I have Ms. Jensen here to let us know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. The public hearing scheduled for this evening is to consider bylaw 4696 for a heritage revitalization agreement for 2031 Runnymede Avenue. If adopted, the agreement would retain the heritage designated residence in its existing location and require ongoing maintenance of the home. Much of the home has already undergone significant upgrades by the current owners. The agreement would also facilitate a two-lot subdivision of the entire site, where the existing heritage home would be retained on one lot, and a new single-family home constructed on the northerly lot. And zoning bylaw requirements would be varied to permit the existing secondary suite within the heritage home, and to relax lot width for the northerly lot from 21.34 meters to 18.74 meters. For information, heritage revitalization agreements are provided for through the Local Government Act, which contains provisions for agreements to be used as a means of allowing redevelopment of a heritage property while respecting its heritage character. For example, an agreement can set terms and conditions for items such as use and density, which would then take precedence over other district bylaws. Its primary intent is to preserve the heritage home while allowing some form of benefit to the owner, so long as the provisions of the agreement are agreed to by both the owner and the municipality. As background, 2031 Runnymede is listed in the Oak Bay Community Heritage Register, and a heritage designation bylaw was adopted in 1980 that protects the lands and the existing home. That statement of significance was updated in 2015, making modifications to some of the character-defining elements of the property. The home itself is known as Blair Gowie, an Italian Renaissance revival home designated by, designed by Samuel McClure for a member of the Bouchard family. Council previously considered this revitalization agreement last year, where first and second readings were given to the bylaw, and a public hearing was held in September. At that time, the proposal included variances for the lot frontage and sighting of a new home on the north lot, and a variance for sighting of a detached garage to service the heritage home, and a variance for the lot width. Since that time, the applicants have made some modifications to the proposal by removing some of the previously requested variances. Variances for the new home on the north lot have been removed, so a new home would have to meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw. The detached garage has been removed from the proposal, so a variance to the front lot line setback is no longer required. The modified plans do not change the layout of the proposed subdivision, with the exception that the proposed lot line adjustment to the rear of the home, which would have accommodated use by an adjacent property along Falkland Road, that has been removed. In other words, the rear lot line is staying, and it's an original sighting. The revitalization agreement has also been updated to refer to lot width and not lot frontage, which was an error in the previous document, and which varies the lot width requirement from 21.34 meters to 18.74 meters. In summary, the modified plans do not change the layout of the proposed subdivision, but the requested variances for a proposed detached garage and the new single-family home have been removed. The new home would be subject to all requirements of the RS4 zone.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen, and I just want to find out, we have a few people standing in the hallway. Is, are the speakers in the hall working? Can people hear us in the hallway? They are not. I'm just kidding. They tend to be, they're located a bit farther back, so they may have to stand a bit farther back. Mr. Anderson, could you just go out? I'll just keep talking here, and perhaps you can just go and see if it's audible to you as you walk out into the hallway, and what point it starts, if it does start at all. We were struggling with our microphones and AV. Okay, so the far speakers are working? Oh. So, if you could just use your microphone. I couldn't, can you just explain what the state of those, of the speakers out there?
Yes, your worship. The two near speakers nearest to the chambers are working, so the folks that are standing are able to hear from, in the lobby or at the edge of the chambers as they're standing.
Okay, I'll just ask everyone, including myself, to speak loudly and clearly then, so that the sound carries as best as possible into the hallway. Item number two on our agenda is to receive the written submissions. These are on Agenda Item Number Two.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Not opposed? Thank you. We turn to Ms. Vrella or Ms. Hopkins to, is there any new submissions that have come in since 3:00 PM that are not included in our agenda package?
Thank you, your worship. There are a number of letters that, due to a technical problem, are not currently included online in the agenda, and so we want to make sure that those are included into the record, so bear with me. I have a few to read out.
Okay, please do.
The first is from Pam Copley, and it's lengthy. Mayor Murdock and members of council, an HRA application for 2031 Runnymede Avenue is before you for consideration this evening. I recently toured the property and was highly impressed by the extent and quality of the work the owners have carried out to bring this important community landmark back from the brink of ruin. They are focusing their more recent efforts on re-establishing what had long ago been beautiful grounds, a mammoth undertaking considering how overrun with blackberries, ivy, and other invasive species the garden had become. Council recently supported another HRA proposal on Newport Avenue, which was an excellent example of creative land use as envisioned in the OCP and of the HRA tool and how it was intended to be used. I strongly encourage you to support the present application for the following reasons. An HRA agreement in the context of this proposal is the most effective tool in the heritage toolkit to maximize the benefit to both parties and achieve a positive outcome for the municipality and for the homeowner. This is, I believe, the third time in an eight-year period the applicants have been before council with a variation of the proposal to subdivide this very large property. They have clearly demonstrated their good faith and dedication to fulfilling their part of the agreement through meticulous, appropriate, and extremely tasteful, to say nothing of costly and time-consuming rehabilitation of this valuable and valued historic place, which would otherwise have suffered from demolition by neglect. Through significant personal investment in this property, they have returned Blair Gowie to a position of pride within the community and the neighborhood. The owners have made a conscious decision to live and contribute to the community in this way, which, in my opinion, is a far better option than seeing it fall into the hands of land speculators who very often live elsewhere. Removal of the unsightly and dilapidated pool and pool house on a subdivided section of the property will further enhance the streetscape and usefulness of the space. Finally, comments made by some members of the public seem to indicate a misunderstanding that this is privately-owned property. While the public may have been granted access to the property in the past for particular events, it is not a publicly-owned or operated facility like a museum or heritage site, and the owners are under no obligation to grant such access going forward. An HRA is almost always a negotiated agreement between owners of private property, which Blair Gowie is, and the local government. The following is a guide which you may find helpful in understanding the HRA tool and in coming to a decision this evening. Apologies to those who may already have received it. The section on HRAs is on page 44 as follows of the Heritage Conservation Community Guide. Heritage Revitalization Agreement, Local Government Act, Section 966, with a note that the section reference may not be current. What is it? A heritage revitalization agreement is a formal voluntary written agreement negotiated by a local government and an owner of heritage property. A heritage revitalization agreement outlines the duties, obligations, and benefits negotiated by both parties to the agreement. A heritage revitalization agreement may detail the timing of the agreement terms, vary or supplement the provisions of a rural land use bylaw, including use, density, sighting, and lot size, vary or supplement the provisions of a bylaw which concern land use designation, development cost recovery, subdivision, and development requirements, vary or supplement a permit under Part 26 of the Local Government Act, Planning and Land Use Management, vary or supplement a bylaw or heritage alteration permit under Part 27 of the Local Government Act, and/or include other terms agreed to by the local government and the property owner. What does it do? Heritage revitalization agreements are intended to provide a powerful and flexible tool which enable agreements to be specifically written to suit unique properties and situations. They may be used to set out the conditions which apply to a particular property. The terms of the agreement supersede local government zoning regulations and may vary use, density, and sighting regulations. When do you use it? A heritage revitalization agreement is suited to unique conservation situations that demand creative solutions, such as complex and unique sites requiring exceptions and relaxations to zoning regulations. How do you use it? Local government identifies the need for the use of a heritage revitalization agreement. The need may arise from the unusual sighting of a building, a unique lot configuration, or other circumstances. Local government and the property owner negotiate the terms of the heritage revitalization agreement, including the obligations, duties, and benefits of the agreement. Local government seeks legal advice and drafts the heritage revitalization agreement bylaw. If the use or density of the property are proposed to be changed, a public hearing must be held. Council or regional district board adopts the bylaw. Within 30 days of adoption of the bylaw, local government files a notice in the land title office to register the heritage revitalization agreement on the property title. Local government must also notify the minister responsible for the Heritage Conservation Act. A heritage revitalization agreement may only be altered with the consent of the property owner and the local government. Local government must adopt a bylaw to amend a heritage revitalization agreement, and it's signed yours respectfully, Pam Copley.
The next letter is to the mayor and council of District of Oak Bay. We are currently residents of Sandwich, but until August of this year, we were living in the rental suite at 2031 Runnymede Avenue. We had first seen the property in the existing, yet unfinished ground floor apartment in 2014, when we had come to Victoria to visit our friends, Bruce and Ann, the owners of the house, and to discuss the possibility of moving into the suite once renovated. We were thrilled about the possibility of living in such a great area, although we could not envision how the space would ever be renovated into an apartment worthy of such a grand home. We needn't have worried, because when we stepped into our new place a year later, we saw that Bruce and Ann had created a beautiful, welcoming living space that complemented not only the rest of the home, but the surrounding neighborhood as well. During our nearly four-year stay at 2031 Runnymede, we witnessed continuous improvements to the property, both the interior and exterior of the house and the landscape. With meticulous attention to detail, Bruce and Ann have transformed this residence while preserving its heritage character and ensured that it will continue to be enjoyed by the community for at least another century. In our opinion, no small feat, considering the dilapidated state it was in before they purchased the property. We think that the suite, as part of this proposal, not only adds sorely-needed rental accommodation in Oak Bay, but will continue to assist in the long-term continued maintenance of this landmark property. We strongly support the proposal that is both for council. Thank you, Mark Belanger and David Ellingson.
The next letter starts, "I oppose development at 2031 Runnymede Avenue. If the existing home is already designated as heritage, I see no justification for approval of a subdivision. The heritage label is simply being used in an attempt to develop the property for profit without any benefit to the community. Further, I don't think secondary suites should be allowed in a heritage building. Finally, the requested variance in lot width amounts to asking permission to build a house more than 11 feet wider, yet another monster house. Please save this property." Signed, Alan Gibson.
This is a letter of support for the granting of the subdivision HRA at 2031 Runnymede Avenue, Oak Bay. Blair Gowie is an historical and iconic house in Oak Bay. It does, however, still require significant and costly restorations in order to bring it back to its full glory and to allow it to stand well into the future. Had Bruce and Ann not already taken on the restoration of this home, it would have been lost to demolition by neglect. An HRA will protect the house and property into the future, as long as the proposed subdivision is approved. This is the only way that, the huge financial burden of restoring the house and grounds can be accomplished. The majority of the now-existing home, homes surrounding Blair Gowie, were subdivided off from the original parcel of land. Ironically, the only way to preserve the nature of the neighborhood is to embrace change. Bruce Wilken and Ann Hillier are not unknown entities in Oak Bay. Every project they have taken on has been done with care, consideration, and taste. It is high time to let them go on doing what they do, adding value and beauty to our neighborhood." Signed, Susan Ramsey.
Mayor Murdock and council, I had the opportunity to see this home in 2016 while serving on the Heritage Commission, and then again this week. I am writing in support of the application for the heritage revitalization agreement designation and subdivision of the property. The dilapidated condition of this home and surrounding gardens prior to 2013, when the extensive renovations commenced, put it on the path towards demolition. Only the love of heritage properties and dedication of the current owner saved it from this fate. The exterior of the home has been restored to its former glory and in keeping with its architectural heritage, while the interior has been preserved for the next 100 years. Everything from light fixtures to fireplaces, moldings to windows, tilework to countertops has been beautifully restored. The addition of a small caregiver/caretaker apartment ensures that owners can remain in the home and get the help they need as they age, and can no longer care for the property in the same manner. With the house renovation almost complete and the restoration of the gardens well underway, it is time to consider the fate of the pool and pool house, both of which are in extremely poor condition. It makes sense to subdivide the property and permit the construction of a new home on the side lot, a home whose design is in keeping with the neighboring properties. We need to continue to add to our housing stock when and as we can. Oak Bay has many small neighborhoods, such as this corner on Runnymede, making walking and exploring such a pleasure. Thanks from all of us should be offered by the municipality to the owners for preserving this unique property. It is a shame the HRA designation was not confirmed by council at the outset of the work in 2013, thereby permitting planning and work to get underway so much sooner. But it is better late than never. I urge you to support this application." Signed, Jan Mears.
To Oak Bay Mayor and council, we are writing in support of the application for an HRA for the property at 2031 Runnymede Avenue. We have known Bruce Wilken for many years, and he has been instrumental in renovating, restoring six properties on our behalf. They have always been carried out with great sensitivity and care for both the properties and their historic origins. The home on Runnymede was in desperate need of care and attention. Today, it stands as a testament to that care and has revitalized the neighborhood. A heritage revitalization agreement would be an appropriate approach to further enhance the property at 2031 Runnymede Avenue and will, in fact, protect this property for the future. You can be assured that any development on this property will be sympathetic to the area and to the surrounding properties. We strongly support this application. Thank you. Respectfully, James and Diana Black.
I am writing in support of the application for a heritage revitalization agreement for the house and property at 2031 Runnymede Avenue. Six years ago, I was hired to rewire this large home, as it contained unsafe knob-and-tube wiring. Since then, the applicant has transformed what could have been described as a rundown fire hazard into a tastefully restored, beautiful home. I have rewired dozens of homes throughout Victoria and Oak Bay over the past 15 years. In some cases, the character of these homes has been compromised by the homeowners' attempts to change or modernize. In contrast, the owners of 2031 Runnymede Avenue have gone to great lengths to make this home electrically safe and functional, while preserving the building's original character. When I first saw the property, the garden was completely overgrown. To date, the property has been extensively restored and professionally landscaped. Given the care and professionalism the owners have applied so far to this large and important project, I have every confidence that the full restoration of the home and rehabilitation and enhancement of the grounds will be completed to the same high standard. Sincerely, Michael Cameron.
And this is the last one. To the Oak Bay Mayor and council, we are the residents, we are residents and neighbors, and we are writing in support of the proposed development at 2031 Runnymede Avenue. We dreamed for many years of owning a home in this neighborhood, as we feel that Oak Bay is second to none in its picturesque charm. Already, we have enjoyed watching the care being taken to restore 2031 Runnymede, as both the main home and grounds are meticulously being returned to their previous splendor. Given the history of the region and of this home in particular, we are glad to hear of the steps Bruce has taken to obtain an official heritage designation, as it ensures that the charisma we feel for will be maintained and protected. We feel this hard work and excellent taste adds value to the neighborhood and shows his investment in our community. We also support Kevin Murdock's policy of densification in Oak Bay, in that it upholds the single-family character of the neighborhood and also allows for community growth. The proposal at 2031 Runnymede achieves this exactly, in that it will create a second lot that is generous in size without impacting the stateliness of the existing home. In fact, rebuilding on the second lot would be quite an improvement, as the current outbuilding there lacks the character of the main house and is in need of an upgrade. As fans of Bruce's work in building and design, it is our hope that he will be the one to build on that lot, as we trust that he will only contribute positively to the beauty and appeal of our street. Respectfully, Brianna and Joshua Budlowski.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. We need to get you a lozenge after all that. Yeah, the dangers of having hiccups and not getting things onto the electronics. So, thank you very much for that, for those submissions. We just need a motion to receive those late additions. Moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing on all those in favor? Opposed? Not opposed? Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward if you wish to present the proposal. If I can just ask you to set the standard for whicheverbody else will follow, just your name and municipality of residence.
Bruce Wilken, Oak Bay.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, your worship and council. First of all, could I have?
Mr. Wilkins, can you just move that a little closer to your most and speak a little louder, because the people in the hallway won't be able to hear you. Thank you.
Could I have access to my photographs, please?
Yes.
Lots of glitches. There we go. That's good. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Our application is for heritage revitalization agreement for 2031 Runnymede Avenue. We are proposing to subdivide our 54,788 square-foot property into two lots. The new one to the north would be 12,809 square feet. The other, which includes the existing house, would be the remainder of the property at 41,979 square feet, which is just shy of an acre. We are asking permission to subdivide our property and to authorize the use of the suite in the lower level of the house, which existed when we bought the house, and has been renovated extensively, in exchange for rehabilitating the house and the property, which is mostly done now, and a covenant to maintain the property in good repair in perpetuity. Just a bit of the background on the house. The house was built for Jenny Bouchard and Harry Ross. It was designed by Samuel McClure. We all know that he is one of our most lauded architects in Victoria. The house is really unusual, in that McClure designed it in Italianate style, or I call it Georgian revival. So, it's very late in McClure's career that he designed this house, and very, very unique, and very unique in its sighting, in that it sits on a knoll. So, it's a very iconic house as you come to the corner of Runnymede Avenue and Runnymede Place. The Rosses had one son, Ian Ross, who went on to put Bouchard Gardens on the map. The house was subsequently owned by the Fee family, and then the Ellis family, who we bought the property from, and that's the brief history of the property. Zoning of the existing properties RS4. Just need to be clear about that, because there has been some information circulating that the zoning for our property is RS2, but the house, as the house and property now are RS4, and the proposed new lot will also be RS4. RS4 allows for a lot a minimum size of 10,204 square feet. So, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the house and what we've done to it. You can see here on our first slide, this is our patio that looks over the property. We had some very serious drainage problems with the property, so we built this patio with quite a large swell in it. So, it collects all of the rainwater and directs it to the land, so, which has corrected the water that was draining into our basement, so we now have a dry basement. There's just another view of the patio. This is a view of the property looking from towards the west, and you can see that the restoration of the garden is well underway. The, one of the defining characters of the property is that the extensive rock gardens that sort of cascade down from the upper patio to the lower part of the property. When we bought the property, this, all of these rock gardens were completely covered in bamboo, ivy, and invasive species, so, Ann has worked very, very hard to bring this garden back to its glory of 1916. Here's a picture of the front of the house. This picture was actually taken a couple of years ago. Now, the hedge row that we planted in front has become quite high, and it's really starting to, as a maturing garden, it's really starting to fill in. This, the property was bounded by a privet hedge that went all the way down Runnymede and Runnymede Place, and it was completely overgrown, and it was full of ivy, our holly, and we weren't able to restore it, so we removed it and replanted the complete front garden. This is a picture of the rear garden, looking from the house down into the yard. You can see extensive new landscaping that's happened over the years, and this is from a pond that was, that we actually discovered under the ivy. So, that's been restored, and you can see the view back up to the, to the house from the lower part of the property. Just another picture of the yard that's been restored. These are some pictures of the interior of the house. So, when we took possession of the house, it was in an incredibly dilapidated state. We have completely stripped the house to the bare walls and have replaced the heating system, all of the plumbing, all of the wiring. We resurfaced all the walls. When we bought the house, it was completely covered in grass cloth from a very insensitive renovation in the 1950s. The handrail that you see in that picture, when we bought it, was wrought iron, cruddy-cue wrought iron, the kind of thing you might see in a Hollywood house. But I've had quite a bit of experience with McClure houses over the years, and I've been able to find moldings and materials, thank you, that are authentic, so, excuse me, that really helped with the restoration of this type of house. That's just one of the bedrooms in the house. You can see the moldings around at the ceiling level. When we bought the house, it was, that ceiling was covered in posters, and it was completely stripped of all those casings and moldings. Here's a picture of a bathroom that we restored. The bathrooms, when we bought the house, were completely unusable. Just another picture of the, everybody who visits the house wants to come up and see where that big Palladian window is, and it's quite, quite a big. where that big Palladian window is, and it's quite, quite a magnificent view from the inside looking out through that window. And you can also see the floor. The floors in the house are all original. We had them refinished, but it's partly because the house was carpeted and we removed the carpets. These floors are in such incredible condition for 100 years. This is a picture of our upper entrance hall and a part of the living room. You can see all the old floors that have been restored. The tile work that you see on the left is actually all new by a master tile worker who's a very good friend of ours, and it's quite amazing the work that he's been able to accomplish in this house. When you see the casings on the doors and the paneling, that's all, that has all been restored. We had to strip, we had to strip all the moldings and all the doors from the house and replace them all. So we had a mill workshop replicate all of the original McClure moldings that we put back onto the house again. This is a picture of the staircase. Again, when we bought the house, it was carpeted. The stairs are quite unusual because they're mahogany. Mahogany shows up in a lot of McClure houses. But so these stairs were refinished. The balusters are, the handrail is all new. We took the wrought iron off and replaced it with new handrails. This is a picture of, this is a library. Again, the floors have been refinished. All the crown moldings, molding work that you see are new. There's a seven-step molding system so that they have kind of, suit the scale of the house and very much in the McClure style. Just another picture of the same library. This is a picture of the entrance hall and the tile work that I mentioned. This is a picture of another bedroom in the house. You can see the original fireplaces and paneling. The house has eight fireplaces, so we made the decision very early on to replace the fireplaces with gas and make the house more energy efficient. We also replaced the heating system in the house. We took all the radiators out. We had them all stripped. We had them all refurbished and we put them back in the house again. And we also zoned all the radiators. So there's about 20 controls in the house that control the heating system. So it's become very, and with the insulation and the spray foam insulation we put in, it's become very efficient. House cost about $225 per month on average to heat it, which is quite amazing for a house that's 8,000 square feet, and that includes our suite in the basement as well. This is a picture of the living room. Again, all the moldings were replaced, the floors were refinished. The house, when we bought it, only had the two main crossbeams, but we added all of the beams crossing the main beams, which is very much in the style of a McClure house. This is a picture of a dining room. In some spots where we'd, all of the light fixtures were stripped out of the house, so we had to go hunting for light fixtures to, to put back into this house. We found a couple of our original ones that are back in the house, and we used companies like Waterglass to help us with authentic fixtures. In this particular room, we had a little bit of fun with modern fixtures because we have a real combination of modern furniture and antique furniture. So it was kind of fun to combine those two styles into the house. Another picture of the living room, picture of the dining room, and here's the kitchen. Now, when we bought the house, Mrs. Ellis used to hold cooking classes in her kitchen, and there was mirrors on the ceiling so that the class could see what was going on in the cooking class. And so it was pretty, pretty dilapidated. But those fixtures that you see are historic fixtures that we were able to find and put back into the house. Another picture of the kitchen, and then beyond that is a family room off the kitchen. Kitchen again, and this is our family room that's off the kitchen. This is the Butler's pantry. Those are original cabinets from 1916. So what we did is we removed all those cabinets from that room, resurfaced the walls, and then put the original Butler's pantry back into the room. This is one of the bathroom. I'm very proud of this tile work. It's kind of done in a Pompeian Roman style. And this was just a small closet when we started, and we've turned it into a very elegant powder room. And also, the chandelier is from an old Heritage Theater somewhere in the, somewhere in the U.S. And these last pictures are of the basement suite. So that's a picture of the basement suite, which I think probably would have been maid's quarters in 1916. But again, we completely stripped it, wired it, insulated it, and put in a gas fireplace. This is a picture of a bedroom in the basement suite. This is a picture of the kitchen in the suite, and that's the bathroom in the suite. So this brings us to the poolhouse and the pool. So on the left, that kind of rocky mess is where the swimming pool was, and that's the back of the cabana. But it's been vandalized over the years and we just pipetied it up and keep it safe, and the pool's got some fill in it just so that people don't, don't fall into the hazard there. This is another picture. We call it the cabana, but it's the poolhouse. The purpose of this building was to be a garage at the lower level, and then there was like a pool table, and it was a playhouse for the kids that, that would use the swimming pool. So this is, you probably remember that quite recently we came to council to ask for the removal of a holly tree. So if you look by this, right behind that speed sign for 30, there was a massive holly tree there, and you couldn't see the house. But what we've been able to do by taking, removing the holly tree is to restore the boulevard. So that grass you see there in the front of the picture is just done in the last couple of months. We removed the old private hedge, and we're going to continue the hedge row that we started down Runnymede Avenue and continue it along Runnymede Place. And you can see in the distance in that picture, the, the poolhouse, and you can see the disrepair that it's in, and it's, and that is the area that we're proposing the new lot. So we've started the landscape at the back of the property. It kind of wraps around the property in a horseshoe, and we end right here where we put in the new boulevard. So this is the place that we, we want, we would like to tear this down and propose a new house on a new, a new lot there. And I'm just going to conclude with just the notes from the, we hired Donald Luxton as our heritage consultant, and in his report, his strategy for this house is to preserve the overall form and massing of the 1916 structure. The appearance of the historic facade should be retained and restored. And he also recommends that the 1926 pool and the 1952 accessory building to accommodate subdivision of the proposed lot. So that is what we're asking you for tonight. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Ann.
Thank you. I'm Ann Hillyer, and I also am a Oak Bay resident. And I'd like to continue from where Bruce left off and talk a little bit about our history with this property, talk a little bit about the HRA process, the asset we think there is in having a suite in the house and providing more accommodation in the community, and then talk a bit more about the future of the property as we see it. So our own history started in 2010 when we were approached by someone who worked with the Ellis family and indicated to us that the Ellis's were looking for a party that might purchase the house and do the restoration work that they thought was necessary. And they asked if we might have an interest in the property. So we met with John Simpson, who was then the business manager for the Ellis family, and with the knowledge of the Ellis family, he talked to us about the possibility of negotiating terms for purchase, which we did with the Ellis family in 2010. The terms included applying to Oak Bay to allow a subdivision of one lot from the parent parcel. So our purchase and sale agreement was conditional on that. We appeared many times before Oak Bay Council between the summer of 2010 and the summer of 2011, and each time we appeared before council, counselors moved our application ahead. We never got to the point of having a concluded heritage revitalization agreement, but that was the direction we were trying to work in during that time. So the last time that we appeared before council in 2011 was on May 16 of 2011, and at that point, a motion was carried, carried directing staff to continue negotiations and negotiating the terms for an HRA with us. Our application was never turned down by council. It was just moved along every time that we came before council. And the support of the family in this process is reflected in the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting. It was a two-part meeting. They appeared, two of the Ellis daughters, Judy and Jillian, appeared during the April 2011 meeting and made submissions. And I'm just going to quote from the minutes of that meeting held on April the 18th of 2011. Jill Ellis, daughter of the late Ms. Ellis, wanted to clarify that she looked after her mother rather than having her go into care. Ms. Ellis felt that the comments made were very offensive, noting that the family is in a difficult situation as it costs a fortune to keep up a house the size of Blair Gowie, and that her mother tried her best to keep it up, but it impoverished her mother to do so. Ms. Ellis said she talked to her mother before she passed away, and she was in favor of this proposal. Therefore, they were not going against their mother's wishes. The family feels that this is the best option to have the family home restored, she said. And I raise that because there are often comments made about Mrs. Ellis's intention, and I think that her daughter's comments at that meeting in a public setting are instructive. In September of 2011, when the time that we had to negotiate the specific terms of an HRA ran out, we had sold our property, our house that we lived in, and we had to move. We withdrew our application. We didn't yet have an HRA document. We were not in a position to wait any longer. We had to live somewhere. We withdrew our application and we purchased another home. After that, the house was on the market for about 16 months. We were told by the Realtor that there were no offers and there wasn't a sale. So in 2013, we were very intrigued with this house. We've loved this house for many years, long before we knew it would become available for sale. In 2013, we decided to return to see whether we could complete a purchase. We entered into an agreement with the Ellis's to purchase the property without any conditions related to subdivision. And we completed the purchase of the property in 2013. We worked on renovations to the house starting in September of that year for over a year, and we moved into portions of the house in 2014. Bruce has detailed the extensive work that we've undertaken between 2013 until now, but it's continuing as well. There's much more work outside than inside, but the house is largely completed. At the time we purchased the property, the, the garden was really totally overgrown with invasive species. It was hard to see very much of the original structure of the garden because of the extent of the holly, ivy, bamboo, there was a massive amount of bamboo, and Himalayan blackberry, and it was interwoven. So even existing vegetation, it was hard to save because of the nature of the invasion of the plants. So the first couple of years, the work in the garden consisted largely of just removing the invasive species and extensive work on rehabilitation of the big significant trees. There's a wonderful stand of oaks and other significant trees like Atlas cedar on the property, and we had an arborist that worked really extensively on the trees, taking out the ivy that had grown up 25 or 30 feet on most of the big trees, having the trees pruned and taking out massive amounts of dead wood. I think he told me that he took about 40% of one of the Atlas cedars wood out because it was dead. And you can see now, when you see that tree, that it's filled in with new growth, and the trees look tremendously healthy compared to what they looked like before. And in the course of that work, getting that stuff out of the property, we started to uncover many of the natural rocks and the built rock structures that had been hidden by the overgrowth. So since that time, we've been involved in extensive ongoing work to rehabilitate the garden, including planting four new, well, new, like young Gary oak trees in the back of our yard, having Oak Bay plant two Gary oak trees on the boulevard. And we've estimated that we've planted about 50 other trees on the property that are considered understory trees. We have lots of big ones. I'm trying to work on the succession of the Gary oaks, but we've planted trees that are probably going to mature at 25 to 30 feet so that there's this understory level of vegetation. And I wish they grew faster, but that's what you have to wait for them. So overall, I think there's been a significant improvement to the garden, even though it's ongoing, and there certainly has been a significant increase to the tree canopy from the time that we bought the property. And, and I raise this because I think that it's an important aspect of a property of this size that you contribute to the increase in the tree canopy in the community because we have the opportunity to do it there, and we've been trying to do that as we proceed. So I'd like to say a couple of words about the nature of the HRA because Pam Copley's letter indicated a lot more detail than I'll go into. But I know you understand that it's a legally binding agreement that's negotiated between the municipality and the owner of a heritage property. These are powerful and flexible tools that are specifically written to suit unique properties and situations. The terms of the agreement can supersede land use regulations and may vary density, use, and citing requirements. And the terms of the agreement describe the duties, the obligations, and the benefits for both parties. It's important to remember that an HRA is intended to be mutually beneficial. That's the way the legislation was designed. As owners, we would agree to restore, preserve, and protect the house and property in exchange for benefits from the municipality. And the benefits of an HRA over heritage designation, I think, are significant. One key benefit is that the owner of the heritage property agrees to ongoing protection and maintenance of the house and property, not just during the term of their ownership, that's a covenant that runs with the land and binds future owners so that there's a legal obligation to protect and maintain the property, and that's something that heritage designation unfortunately doesn't provide. As the Oak Bay Heritage Plan emphasizes, HRAs are not precedent-setting. They're always site-specific. I think Pam's comments covered the rest of what I might have said very nicely. I just wanted to say a couple of things about the suite. It existed at the time that we purchased the house. We understand that Pamela Ellis actually lived down there when she was elderly and had trouble with the stairs. Initially, we improved the suite and moved into that area when we first moved into the house because the main floor of the house was so disturbed by the renovation that we were unable to live there. So we lived in the, in the lower level in part of the suite. And then, once we were able to move upstairs, we were able to extensively renovate, renovate that area. Our, our friends lived in that suite for three and a half years, almost four years, and they, they lived there until August of this year when they moved to a home that they were able to purchase. However, it is an unregulated suite, and part of our application is to have the suite authorized as such so that it clearly is available as a, as rental accommodation. And as you know, it's good to, it's difficult to find good rental accommodation in Oak Bay, and we think that this type of suite in a heritage home contributes to the stock of rental housing while still maintaining the overall character of a single-family home. The suite was built to code under permit and has been inspected and approved by Oak Bay Building Department, so it's been done under their watch. In conclusion, I'd just like to talk about the future of the house and the property. The, the HRA, as I said, includes a covenant that the owners of the property, in this case Bruce and I, as well as future owners of the heritage house, will protect and maintain the house and the property now and in the future. This is much stronger protection for the house and the property than heritage designation. And you can see that by recalling the state of the house and the property when we purchased it. At that point, it had been the subject of heritage designation for 30-plus years. And I don't mean any disrespect to the Ellis family. You heard by her daughter's comments that Pamela Ellis loved this house, and she worked hard to try to maintain this house, but it was difficult for her. Her daughter used the word impoverishing, and, and it was a struggle for her to maintain this property. And she hoped that somebody would be able to restore it so it could be protected into the future. Because whatever the legal protection is, the state of the house gives it the protection into the future. It's a, it's a house that's now much more comfortable for today's standards in terms of its comfort, its energy efficiency, and its ability to provide the kinds of things that people expect in a house in 2019. But we can expect that the life of the house is given a newness by the way that it has been restored, and it, I think, is part of the way that the house gets protected, by being in a state that's going to keep it from further deterioration. So we have had the wonderful privilege of living and benefiting from living in this house, and we are working, continuing to work to bring the garden back to life. We also believe that this restoration has provided benefits to the community and contributed to the preservation of Oak Bay's heritage in a meaningful way, particularly in light of the importance of the architecture of the house and the Butcher and Ross families that built the house in 2016. So in closing, I'd like to ask you, Bruce and I would like to ask for your support of this HRA that we and your staff have worked hard to negotiate for a mutual benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hillyer. And other questions of council, of the applicants, or of staff at this time? Counselor Patterson? Could you just speak a little louder into that? Could you just speak a little louder into that? It seems, it sounds muted.
Mine works.
If we can just have, is Hugh here to have a quick look to see?
Oh, no. Now it's, now, I think, I think it's okay. Okay, I'll keep, I'll keep this off of it, and I'll just try and move over here. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Wilkins and Ms. Hillier, for your presentation. It's evident that you have done a lot of work, expended a lot of time, energy, and finances on restoring this property for the community, and we do appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions or clarifications, probably some for the applicants and some for staff, but if, so, the first one is, under the agreement on page 3F, clause F, it states that the owner wishes to retain the heritage building and to construct a new residential dwelling on Lot 1. Just for clarification, is the owner of the house proposing to be the developer contractor for the new build, or to sever the lot and for sale and development by others? That's one question. Should I go on?
You can, I can give that to the applicant to answer. We like yes or no answers, questions. This is good. Would you please?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Our proposal is to subdivide a lot that would be 12,800 square feet approximately, and make it available for sale. It would be a regular RS4 lot, so it would continue with the zoning of the current property.
Thank you. And just to continue on that note, if, for this lot and for the new proposal, if, we have no information that we have received yet. I'm just wondering if we could have some information from staff, any preliminary information they have, on how that new lot would be serviced, what the route would be for the services to get into the lot, and the, any issues related to the road and driveway into that lot. Like, it looks almost, having visited the site, looked almost like there would be a bit of a shared driveway, but if we could have comments from staff perhaps on that, it would, just to clarify, if they're, if they're really going to be maintained distinctive, or if there has to be any shared pathway into the house. I'm particularly thinking of the impact on the Runnymede Place side of the lot.
I think I could probably comment on that, because there are two distinct lots, and the proposed new lot is seventy feet wide. So there is a dogleg in Runnymede Place, but there's plenty of room there to have a separate driveway. So the two, the access to the property would be the existing access to the heritage house, and there would be a distinctly separate driveway to the new lot. And it's also in elevation, sits quite a bit lower than the heritage house. So on Runnymede Place, the driveway would be lower than the driveway into the existing house on Runnymede. As far as services go, the house is serviced with water and sewer. The house does not have a storm sewer, so there would be new servicing, probably down Runnymede Place, for a new storm sewer.
Mr. Haran, do you have anything else to add to that answer, or is that sufficient?
Through you, Chair, that's actually a pretty complete answer, and all I will add is that, as with any subdivision, the staff intent will be to apply the full measures in the subdivision development by law in terms of requiring the subdivision developer to service the lot as per the Local Government Act.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
And if I can just continue. The new lot that is proposed will also be an RS4, as the applicants have stated, which is a larger area than the previous lots that we looked at. But it is not a square lot. It is more of a, it has more length than it has width, and so, and of course, there is a variance for the setback on the north side. From the planning department, I'm wondering what, if any, limitations that will pose on the dimensions of a new lot house?
I don't believe there's a variance asked for on the north, but maybe staff can just answer that, what limitations are with the lot width.
Again, to clarify, there are no longer any variances attached to any of the lotlines for construction of a new home. The variance that is requested is for the lot width, and because it's somewhat of a triangular lot, we take lot width as measured from one point where the front lotline meets the north side lotline and runs perpendicularly across the site. So in all other aspects of that site, it meets all conditions of the zoning by law.
Thank you. I also noticed in Donald Luxton's report that one of the highlighted pieces that was important for the heritage home was to retain the massing and sitelines on the site. If the, if we have a new lot that is split off, how, what covenants do we have, or what authority do we have from our building and planning department to ensure that that will be maintained in consideration of a new house sitting?
Ms. Jensen?
Again, they would have to comply with the setbacks for the RS4 zoning. Additionally, we would be looking for a siting and design covenant, because it is adjacent to a heritage home, so council would still have some input on the final design.
Thank you.
Thank you. And another question, and this was, the applicant spoke about this, and the, all of the work that has been done, certainly to conserve this, provide the conservation of this house, and certainly the suite in the house will aid financial resources to hopefully preserve the house many years down the road. But there is a requirement also that regular inspections be carried out and reports be kept. I'm wondering, as a district, what oversight we put into place to follow up on those on heritage revitalization area homes and designated homes?
Ms. Jensen?
Staff are actually in the process of setting up a database to track all of our heritage revitalization agreements and periodic updates to determine where we need to undertake inspections.
All right, I'll turn it over to somebody else. I think I've used up quite a bit of time.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson? Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you to the applicants for coming here this evening, and to staff for a comprehensive report and package. Just a question on the new lot proposed. It looks like quite a rocky, rocky outcropping, and I'm just wondering, do you anticipate any blasting on the property? That would be, for me, quite a concern, so just the impact of blasting, certainly on your own home, which is the iconic house itself. So it may be not a question easy to answer, but it would be a great consideration going forward.
I think that because of the rocky nature of the lot, that there would be some blasting to put a new house in, but my experience with blasting these days is that it's, there is low-impact blasting, so that can be done in small bursts, rather than blowing up a huge amount of rock at the same time. And again, it gets removed in the same way, so I just can't imagine that someone, at some point, you've got to find kind of a flat space to build a house, and the rock is extensive as it cascades down through that lot, so yes, I would say there'd be blasting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Any other questions of the applicant or staff? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. Apparently, it's my microphone. That's the, that's the sensitive one. This question would be probably for staff, I imagine. I take solace in hearing that a siting and design covenant is being requested or being sought. I do notice that in the September 1, 2017, report from staff, which was probably for an earlier version of this of this heritage revitalization agreement, it indicated that ADP and council review would be forthcoming with respect to a siting and design, in particular for the house on Lot 1. Just wanted to ask, is this something that the approving officer controls, or is this a part of Oak Bay policy with respect to the siting and design covenant that you referenced? Please.
Ms. Jensen?
It has been practiced that if there is a heritage building involved, that we are looking for a siting and design covenant for adjacent properties.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That helps me greatly. The second question I have has to do with what appears to be an inconsistency, and I wanted staff understanding between the actual conservation bylaw, and you have to give me a moment while I fire up my, my technology just went to sleep on me. I wanted to ask in particular, in the bylaw itself, let's see if I get this right, in section four of the bylaw, where is it, obligations, 4.0, it basically makes reference to the conservation plan, and how the works must be followed through with respect to the conservation plan. So essentially, the conservation plan becomes part of the bylaw, and the aspects of that conservation plan are integral to what needs to be done here. But if I look in the conservation plan itself, and I'll need to jump to that for a moment while I, I'm now going to the conservation plan dated May 2015. In section one of the conservation plan, it talks about the net benefits of completing an HRA, and point number three talks about conservation incentives provided through careful subdivision, as being one of the benefits, of the lot on the north side of the parcel with sympathetic and compatible infill unit. The aspect of the sympathetic and compatible infill unit, is that aspect being fulfilled with respect to the siting and design covenant, or just was wondering, or whether it is simply an explanatory aspect?
Ms. Jensen?
That's correct. That statement is intended to show how a new home on that north lot would fit in with the neighborhood, with the streetscape, with the adjacent Blair-Goway home.
Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, Your Worship. Question, this is probably a question directed at the applicant. I'm just, I'm interested in the specifics of the pool, and in referring to the Luxton report, when we consider the elements of the property and the grounds and the property overall that pertain to McClure's design, the pool is the one component designed by McClure that's identified here that's not slated for retention, and there's very little reference made, the language is very brief, about the pool and area, basically recommending that it be removed due to an advanced state of disrepair, but I think it's clear that most of the grounds and the building itself were also in a state of disrepair. So I'm just wondering, do, whether you had any further information or clarification from the consultant as to why they felt that that particular McClure design element shouldn't be retained?
I'll go to Mr. Wil, Ms. Hillier? Mr. Wilkins?
Yeah, it's like playing Family Feud. The pool was not part of McClure's original plan, but on that property, there was a small, like a teahouse, a gazebo, that sat in the location of the pool. So if you look on the original 1916 plans, you'll see that there was, and there is evidence of an old foundation that was probably, that teahouse was probably removed when they put in the pool and the pool house, which was in the 1950s.
If I could add to that, the designation bylaw refers to the house, and it identifies the square footage of the residence and the land, and that's the original 1980 designation bylaw, which I'm sure planning staff can confirm to you. I'm sure it's in the package. It's a very simple, one-page document. In today's methods of designation, we would have much more information than they did in 1980.
Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, Your Worship. So I guess that maybe is a follow-up question for staff. Does that mean that the outbuildings are not included in that original heritage designation?
Turn to Ms. Jensen?
That is correct. The bylaw is very specific to speak to the lands and the heritage home, not the accessory buildings or the pool structure.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Counselor Braithwaite?
Thank you, through you, Chair. I have a couple of questions. I think one is just a clarification, because I saw a lot of concerned looks in the audience when you were talking about, when Mr. Wilken was talking about the suite. So can, Ms. Jensen, could you hopefully explain to everyone how they were able to complete a suite with a permit when in actual fact, suites are not legal in Oak Bay, because I know there was a lot of questioning looks there?
Ms. Jensen?
Thank you. Yeah, so there is a lot of history on this property, obviously dating back to the early 1900s. Some of our records are a little bit spotty, so we do have some drawings that seem to indicate that there was, there has been a suite in there for a significant amount of time, but we don't have any documentation that specifically says, "Check your illegal suite." So we have to go by the documentation that we have available to us, which is why they were granted approval to proceed with completing the suite. From what we have, it appears that they did legally have a suite.
Right, so if others in the audience were thinking they might be able to get a suite, that's not really the case, unless they had proof like this. So I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing I wanted to ask about is, if this subdivision did go ahead, would there be concession in the future for the larger lot to be subdivided again? Would we have anything that could stop that from happening?
Thank you. The property is heritage-designated, so any future proposal would come back in front of council.
And so, if I may, sorry, so it would be at the will of council whether or not to allow an additional subdivision, of the council at that time, to allow an additional subdivision or not?
That is correct.
Thank you. And my last question would be, kind of going on something that Counselor Zelka was talking about in regards to the size of the lot and the size of the house that would be allowed there. Would we have any ability to limit the size of a house that would be able to be put on this lot, that would make, would allow it to be made smaller than what's allowable under the current bylaw?
Ms. Jensen?
Yeah, I think we could potentially put in a clause into the HRA that would limit it to a smaller building, but again, that would be an agreement between council and the applicant.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Counselor Green?
I was pleased to see that you have a permeable surface for the new driveway, where you've taken out the holly tree. Is it possible in future consideration for that lot, if it was approved for a new build, would we, through you, Mayor, to staff, would we be able to encourage the use of permeable surfaces at the street level? I'm just concerned about the amount of pavement that seems to be going on in Oak Bay generally, and I know that with the climate change concerns, pavement is less desirable in some locations. And the permeable surface that Mr. Wilken and Ms. Hillier have installed, and I would like to hear from them, seems to be working well, and if I'm, if it isn't, I would be interested in your comments.
Maybe just to keep this on track here, just, there's nothing in the covenant, in the agreement here, that would stipulate that, that would be coming under the siting and design discussion for the lot. Is that correct?
That is correct. We typically ask for a landscape plan as part of the deciding and design covenant, and anytime we're having a conversation with new owners, we always encourage the use of green technologies, including permeable surfaces. That would pertain to the driveway that is on the property. For that piece that's extending out into the roadway, that would fall under district bylaws, and we're very, we have very clear examples of what can be used in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? I have to get to the audience here if I can. Oh, Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may ask just a couple more, and this follows through with some of the thoughts that Counselor Braithwaite expressed on this. For the proposed new build, we are, of course, working on a housing framework for the district at this time, so we don't know yet what will be determined out of that, but as this is a separate new build, I would then assume that if secondary suites are considered in the district, that this building may also be considered for a secondary suite in addition to the one that is in the heritage house?
Mr. Anderson?
I think that the premise is secondary suites being permitted, and I think what we don't know yet is if so, what conditions there might be on those, so I think it's pretty pretty difficult one to forecast right now.
Counsel Patterson?
Just following on that, thank you. So it, we will have to wait and see what is, what is decided for the, for the district as a whole, and then I suppose revisit this. I think it's safe to assume that it could be a possibility. Now, there is no parking for the original heritage home that is on the property, so it will be surface parking for that building, and the new build will of course have parking associated with, as required under the bylaw for the building that is built on the new lot, correct?
Ms. Jensen?
So to clarify, the new home would be required to provide adequate parking on the site. That would include at least two parking spaces, one of them which has to be covered. That is also accommodated on the site with the heritage home, where the port cochee out in the front actually does provide covered parking.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Oh, Counselor Zelka?
If I may, with one last question. This could be for other staff or the proponent. With the, with respect to the new lot, lot number one, I'm presuming that on the restrictions for an RS4 with respect to setback, especially the rear lot setback, that that would effectively protect what's known as the Gary Oak Meadow back there? I would love an understanding in terms of where possibly we're expecting an RS4-sized house to be placed. Approximately how many Gary Oaks might be within the footprint of a potential proposed building? Please.
Ms. Jensen, I point out, we do have siting and design control over this, but...
If I may, but we don't choose where the actual site goes, unless we do.
Ms. Jensen?
With the siting and design covenant, two things come into play. First, council does have some ability to have a discussion about the siting on the site, so long as it's meeting the zoning setback requirements. And while we don't know what that specific siting would look like for a new home on that site, I would anticipate that it would not impact any more than two of the oak trees that are sited more in the central portion of the lot, and those are at point two and point one five in diameter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Any other questions? All right, then, with that, we're gonna go to the, I don't remember, six or six A, which is the public input. So at this time, the applicant is welcome to just take a seat in the seats, and then I'll invite folks to come forward at this time. If you wish to come, just if people wanna, just one or two at a time can line up, and then you can each take. I'll just remind everybody again, so please just come up to the microphone. Just a reminder that your name and your comments will be recorded for the public record. If you can again just state your name, your municipality of residence, it's helpful if you can, if you can state whether you're in favor or opposed to the proposed bylaw, and then provide your comments. We will have a timer. The green light will come on, and it'll turn yellow. Oh, it won't. We don't have the timer on.
Not for public hearing, your worship. I'll signal you in five minutes if been exceeded.
Okay, and so we'll do a gentle move along, and again, everybody will have an opportunity to have secondary comments if they wish, so, welcome.
My name is Patrick Fry. I live at 1401 Oliver Street. I've been a resident of Oak Bay for, since 1977. In the interest of full disclosure, I'm the vice chair of the current APC for the municipality, and I've had extensive involvement with the OCP, the development of the official community plan. As part of my professional background as well, I was the manager of legislation and policy at the time the legislation was developed, the current heritage legislation. In other words, I had to approve the HRA provisions as part of that policy development. So I did. I want to speak in favor, strongly in favor, of the Blair Gauway HRA. This is the only provision of the legislation, with the exception of a covenant under the Land Title Act, that allows for the, an agreement to be set between an owner and the local government. It is fine-grained by definition. Therefore, it is, it can address both the expectations in terms of investment and regulation of the property. I've lived in Oak Bay since 1977, and I've watched Blair Gauway decline over the years, until the present owners acquired the property and made a substantial investment in the housing gardens that are consistent with the, and demonstrate their commitment to the property. The HRA primarily enables a subdivision of the property to allow for another RS4 property in excess of 12,000 square feet. This is entirely acceptable within an HRA. To reiterate, I'm in favor of the HRA for Blair Gauway. Make no mistake about that. Minor point to council on this point is if there are no further changes to the bylaw required, you can approve the bylaw, move it to third reading tonight, and approve it, as in your regular council meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. So for those in the audience, if you wish to come forward, just have a seat at the table, and these microphones are apparently working properly, and our other ones are not.
I'll go track that other gentleman down.
Great, thank you.
Hello, my name is David Naismith. I live at 885 Runnymede Place, two doors north of Blair Gauway, and I have lived there since 1983. I know Bruce and Anna, and I like them. I wanted to say that we are met this evening to discuss a subdivision of a property. We spent 90% of the presentation looking at what a wonderful job they did on the house, and they did. They're not gonna have anything to do with this new house, but they did a very nice job of the house. I've been through it. It looks lovely. Mrs. Ellis would be very happy. I knew Mrs. Ellis well. I was there since 1983. I can tell you, if she was aware of this discussion today, she'd be spinning like a lathe in her grave. That property, she was passionate about. I would point out, pardon me?
Just keep the comments from the audience, and they, you're welcome to come forward and make comments, but if you're just, let's not go there.
I would point out that the Ellis family is not Pam Ellis. We had discussions with her in person regarding this, and she valued the property as well as the home. They've done an exceptional job on the home. She would be very proud of that. I had two pages of notes. I've abandoned them. Let me address a question that Counselor Patterson brought up, and that is the road. Runnymede Lane is one car wide for much of its length. You're absolutely correct. It's a very difficult commute through there. The only access a new property will have will be right onto that lane where it is at its narrowest, and it's also a blind corner. Something will have to be done to address that, if you agree to this bylaw. I also, I have to say, in principle, find it offensive that someone would buy a property knowing that it's heritage designated with a long-term ultimate view of subdividing it. I understand it can be done, and unlike the previous speaker, I have absolutely no qualifications, other than the fact that I'm a neighbor and I live in the neighborhood. But I think that if you make the wrong decision on this, that a very strong message will be sent to developers that heritage designation means nothing. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think you know where I stand on the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come forward, you can just have a next seat over, and we'll have a little system going here.
Hello, I'm Teresa Williams.
If you just push your button there, there we go.
Hi, I'm Teresa Williams. I live in, on Falkland Road, immediately adjacent to this property, and we've lived there since 1975. My question, I guess to Deborah, is the bylaw 3343 of 1980 still in place?
Ms. Jensen, the current designation bylaw, I believe that's the reference to, is it still in place?
Correct.
Yes.
And there were changes made in 2015? Does that take away the designation of the land as heritage? That is my question. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, if you just write down your name as well, so we have the correct spelling. You don't want you have your name spelt wrong in perpetuity in our, in our minutes, so. Ms. Jensen, were there changes made in 2015?
To clarify, the bylaw has not had any changes made to it. There were proposed modifications to the statement of significance in 2015. That does not impact the bylaw.
Thank you.
Well, then I would like to further add that this is going to be setting a precedent in the whole municipality about a heritage property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker come forward.
Excuse me while I get my artificial eyes to go along with my artificial ears and artificial teeth. My name is Michael McGee, and I live at 759 Mount Joy, three doors down from Blair Gauway. I'll read a letter that you should have in your files, but I want to make sure everybody hears it here. The owners of 2031 Runnymede are again seeking to subdivide their land pursuant to a heritage revitalization agreement. The subdivision, if granted, would create a large lot, large enough to build a 5,000-square-foot house, not including basement or potential suite, with no restrictions as to design or siting. It is my view that this matter should be sent back to the Heritage Commission for review, as the proposed subdivision of today is quite different from earlier iterations, and would have significant impacts on the land, the streetscape, and the neighborhood, which is a heritage precinct, in and on its own right, in small scale. The previous review by the Heritage Commission, which is being relied on here again, included a design for a proposed house and a different and smaller lot. The current proposal does not include a house design or any requirement that a house built on the proposed lot should comply with the guidelines in Oak Bay's official community plan, that new housing should integrate with the existing neighborhood, or with heritage objective to conserve established neighborhoods and streetscapes. And there are some references to the OCP. If the mayor and council are unwilling to seek the opinion of their Heritage Commission, Dunbar requests that they reject this application to relax the zoning bylaw requirements in pursuit of this HRA, and deny the request to subdivide. The Blair Gauway property was purchased as a heritage property and not as a development site, and this reality was reflected in its cost and taxable value for many years. It has been slowly restored, and the restoration work seems to be essentially complete. An unauthorized suite was installed several years ago, and its rental has underwritten costs to the restoration. Maintenance costs should accrue to the owners as they do to all other homeowners. Provision of an HRA after restoration work has been done is super derogatory. There is no good argument for conferring such a benefit on these landowners to the detriment of their neighbors and the community, and thus no good argument for variance to the bylaw requirements. Blair Gauway is a unique and irreplaceable property that is a vital part of a heritage cluster of single-family dwellings set in spacious gardens. If its garden is subdivided, the goal of the heritage designation is undermined. Heritage values are undercut, and a precedent is set for aggressive efforts to hive off gardens from heritage buildings for the purpose of development. There are many such applications being brought in Oak Bay, but few concern properties as exceptional as Blair Gauway, and if the mayor and council will not prevent subdivision and development of 2031 Runnymede, it is hard to know what part of our protected heritage property will be defended. Purchasers of such properties have knowledge of their protected status, and it should not be the ordinary course of business that such protected properties are stripped of their gardens and much of their beauty and value to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker, I'd like to come forward.
Mayor and council, my name is Brian Berry. I just lived to the north of Blair Gauway, 867 Runnymede Place, and like Dave before me, I've had a number of points, which I'll make a little bit briefer. We had the picture, the photograph of Blair Gauway's backside, side on the Runnymede Avenue Runnymede Place, with the, with the pool house view. And that is the view that you get coming down Runnymede Place, and also from Runnymede Avenue. A building of approximately 5,000 square feet, up on a rock, which must come close to the heritage home itself, has to. There's no way of setting a 5,000-square-foot home on that lot that's not going to be in the face of everybody, and in the face and somewhat obscuring undoubtedly the beauty of Blair Gauway itself. It will absolutely change the streetscape and the beauty of Blair Gauway. The gardens behind the pool house have been left to deteriorate, and the pool house itself and the, and the carport, the carport's been taken down. Those were all intentionally left to deteriorate. There's, there's no, no question about that. And I suppose a casual observer would say, yeah, a big beautiful house would look, look great there compared to that mess. But the, it's, it's not a binary choice of leave those as they are versus carve off a lucrative lot, and then have a large house built on it. There's going to be a secondary suite approved, I suspect. I would support that. That can go a long way to the continued financing of, of the maintenance of Blair Gauway, because the restoration has largely happened. But it can be, council can easily deny this subdivision of a new lot with a new house, and the expectation is really the owners should take care of the lot, and can do something with the, with the previous carport and the pool house, whatever they, whatever they wish to do that's going to make, what's gonna fit into the heritage building itself, and serve the purpose of a carport, or a garage, or whatever you will, short of actually carving off a lucrative lot and building a massive house. In other words, I am absolutely against this bylaw, and Mr. Fry, who I have great respect for, is, is probably right from a technicality, but the, but the point is, the community in that neighborhood is not in support, and I think I've sent you a petition to that. The streetscape will absolutely be changed. The heritage nature of Blair Gauway will be changed. It'll be irreversible, and, and there is a precedent that will be set, and a few people have said that, and there's no question about that. You can't deny that carving off the north lot will not, in the future, when, when, when the current owners are not there, will then be attempted on the south lot. There's over an acre there. Lots of room for another subdivision. And I think that it's up to you to stop that right now. And I would ask, and I would ask you to deny the subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Please come forward.
My name is Giles Deschun. I live at 931 Runnymede Place. I've lived there for a decade with my young family. I would like to speak to oppose this subdivision. My initial comment is that the letters in support that you've heard this evening are not from residents of Runnymede Place. of Runnymede Place. They've not had to put up with the mattress dumped at the end of the street for months. They've not had to put up with the private hedge untrimmed, further narrowing the dangerous and narrow roadway that is the corner, the blind corner, where the driveway that is proposed on this subdivision is to go, until it was dug out. I do not agree that the effect will be as described in the agenda of a two-lot, single-family residential development. We've heard a lot about the suite already in place, and so Blair Gowie will not be a single-family home. There will be no restriction on a suite in the new building to be built on the subdivided lot. This proposal is more accurately described as, can I tear down my garage, blast some rock, surround the historic house with parked cars, and put up a big new house for profit? While Oak Bay likely needs more density, this is not the way. This application is not the way. It's wrong for Oak Bay for these reasons. One, the house is heritage-listed. Two, the garden is heritage-listed. Three, the proposed driveway is unsafe. It is on a narrow, blind corner bound by two gary oak trees about 12 feet apart. I bike this corner twice a day. My son walks it twice a day. My family uses it twice a day, as do several of the other young families on this street. This proposal is about one thing on behalf of the developers who seek it: profit. This HRA is unnecessary. The house has been restored. This subdivision on one side of the property will ruin the aesthetic placement of Blair Gowie, sited in the middle of its land. The logical next step is a further subdivision on the south side, where an earlier, earlier application before an earlier council was already made. There is no prohibition on further subdivision. Your decision is simple. Do you wish to maintain the character of Oak Bay, or do you want to be responsible for making the development in our single-family neighborhoods even more disruptive? The gift to the community made by Mrs. Ellis should not be revoked by this council. Finally, you should ask yourselves, what do you wish to leave behind you as a council? Do you wish to leave a community whose few large lots that are left are in danger of being carved up, or do you wish to leave a community that respects its remaining significant large lots? If you allow this subdivision, that's what this is. This is an application for subdivision. It is a green light. It's a green light to developers in Oak Bay. Thank you.
If you could just write down, thank you. Yeah, we're just going to ask people not to clap or boo either way. Everybody to feel comfortable to come up here and say whatever they feel up to say.
Hi, my name's Heather Sweeney, and I live at 2028 Runnymede Avenue. So, my husband and I and our daughter live right across the street, or the lane. It's basically a lane Runnymede is, from Blair Gowie. We live in a heritage property that we purchased in complete disrepair. So, I understand the time and money that goes into such a renovation, and I appreciate the work that they have done on the house, but I am not in favor of subdividing the lot off of Blair Gowie property. Neither is my husband. He's not able to attend tonight, so I'm speaking on his behalf as well. This is one of the few properties in Oak Bay where the land itself is designated. There are very few of them, and it should be protected. Council can't in good faith ask people to designate their homes or land without standing behind that promise to preserve the homes and lands. Now, the owners of Blair Gowie want you to agree to an agreement, to a revitalization agreement for a house that has already been substantially restored and was done years ago. So, it's a little strange to me that there, that this HRA now refers mainly to the house. There's been a lot of focus on the house tonight and not as much on the lot. When I looked at the HRA, the subdivided lot itself is specifically mentioned in Section 7.2, where it says, and I quote, "Notwithstanding the terms and conditions of this agreement, future development on Proposed Lot 1 is exempt from the requirement to obtain an approved heritage alteration permit." So, I'm not quite sure what, there's been some talk tonight about this citing and design covenant. Is that guaranteed? I don't see that in writing, so I, I'm not sure that we can believe that that's really going to happen. All I know is what's in the HRA now, and it says that that lot is exempt. So, what that means to me is that they can build a 5,000-square-foot house excluding a basement, sitting on a rock promontory. So, for the Berry family that lives next door to that, that's like having a three-story building built right next to you. I'm not sure if any of you would like that. If a basement is built, I imagine there will be blasting, or even just to flatten the, the lot for building without a basement, and that will destroy any vestige of the designated rock garden that you are supposed to be protecting. There will be no restriction on the character of the house built, and that is of concern and will impact what is left of Blair Gowie. I would like to also say that I think this matter should have been sent back to the Heritage Commission for review, rather than for information purposes only, and I put that in quotes. It's incredible to me that council would consider developing one of the few designated lots in Oak Bay, and I'm talking about the land here, without Heritage Commission input. The HRA you are being asked to approve is not the same one that went before the Heritage Commission in 2016. So, please don't try to convince us or yourselves that that is, that you have Heritage Commission approval, because you don't for what's in front of you tonight. At the July 9, 2019 Heritage Commission meeting, the minutes read, "The revised application is a dramatic change from the original proposal, and council should have referred the application back to the commission." This is your own Heritage Commission saying this. It was, and I'll continue quoting, "It was noted the home is an important historical house. It was a difficult decision in 2016 to recommend the subdivision, and not having plans of the new home is difficult." So, I'm quote, I'm quoting from their meet, the minutes of their meeting. So, it was a difficult decision for them in 2016, and that's when they thought, or were led to believe erroneously that, that the neighbors were in favor of it and we weren't. Okay, on a practical note, I guess I should say that Runnymede is a very narrow street, and I have always been concerned about that corner. We, our house is built right on that blind corner. I love to garden, and I'm out in my yard often, and I can't tell you how many times I have seen cars, well, two cars cannot pass on that corner, and the driveway would be right there. You're going to have additional congestion. There are children riding their bikes, people walking their dogs. It's, you're just courting disaster if you put a driveway there.
Ms. Sweeney, your five minutes are up, so if you could maybe wrap it up. You're welcome to come back and finish later if you wish. Just trying to give everybody a chance to speak once.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No need to apologize.
All right. I just want you to know that, that our neighborhood is not anti-development. We understand people need affordable housing. This is not going to be affordable housing. You'd need two or two and a half million dollars to get into this lot and house. I understand that legal secondary suites and even discreet carriage houses that don't change the streetscape are needed. I get that, and there is your new tax base if you're looking for it. And I'd just like to reiterate that, you know, once you've made this decision, if you give the go-ahead to this, there is no going back. This valuable property will be gone forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eva Lupin. I live with my husband at 777 Mountjoy.
Do I just moving the microphone just slightly closer to your mouth there? Just so we can, there we go, perfect.
Your honor and members of the council, my name is Eva Lupin. I live on 777 Mountjoy Avenue, which is at the south side of the 2031 Runnymede, excuse me. I would like to begin by reminding everyone that this meeting is not about yet another subdivision in Oak Bay. It is about a proposal to subdivide the land designated as heritage on November 10, 1980 by the late Pamela Ellis. I would also like to remind this council and inform the Oak Bay residents gathered here that since 2010, numerous letters, emails, have been sent to the municipality, I mean of protest, and a letter of intent to buy and renovate this property was sent to then mayor and Mrs. Ellis's executor. Now, that particular individual wanted to buy the house, renovate it to the appropriate, in a parapropiet style, and the garden as well, and having unlimited, almost unlimited means, he didn't make any conditions. He didn't need to develop anything. He didn't need to make a few million dollars on it. Well, these letters were not answered or acknowledged. On March 21, 2011, Oak Bay residents expressed their concern by demonstration, the thing first time in our history, in front of this municipal hall. Now, on June 11, 2011, a plan of subdivision prepared by Wei Mayenberg Land Surveying was presented to this municipality as proposed subdivision of, of, now listen carefully, lots D and E, Section 47, Plan 9191. In this proposal, a new lot was incorporated into the proposal, proposed subdivision of 2031 Runnymede. Now, it was briefly mentioned, this event, all this occurs. Now, one would question why, on September 17, 2018, just a few months later, at the public hearing, in which bylaw number 4696 was mentioned, it no longer included the new lot D, which one assumes the developer bought in the meantime. And the same happened in, on September 9, 2019. That was withdrew. That fact was withdrew. Now, you also mentioned, it was mentioned through the question to ask whether we have any guarantee of no, next subdivision, if this subdivision is approved. Well, there is no guarantee. Now, the question is, what, what makes, what, how, how, how can you allow something like this, this subdivision, realizing that the next logical step for the developer would be to cut off another piece of similar size on south side, especially as they own the next lot, which is in, in, you have it in your records, I sent it to you, lot D on Falkland Road? So, what's this withdrawal of the new plan from last year? Wasn't that suspicious? Why, why all of a sudden it's not even mentioned? This is conclusion. Sorry, I am.
We're almost at the end of the five minutes, but you are welcome to come back, and we can, if you want.
I just wanted to conclude, if you don't mind.
Please do.
If this heritage revitalization agreement is adopted by this council, it will not only facilitate a two-lot subdivision of the site lot E, Section 47, but will create a precedent in the preparation of further subdivisions as indicated in the July 11 proposed 2018 plan. And we sincerely hope that this council, in its function of serving us, the community, is not willing to put the wishes of speculating developers above the interests of the majority. We trust that it will conduct our affairs in a wise, open, and democratic manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you write down your name as well, so we have the correct spelling? And I'll just turn to staff, because this, this is, was raised, just the, the difference between the previous application and this. There was some modification to the back of the property, I believe, that would have aligned the property to the existing sort of fence lines and pieces, and those have now been removed. Can you just give a quick summary of what those changes were?
Thank you, your worship. That is correct. The applicant had previously proposed to pull a portion of the lot line back so that the property on Falkland could make better use of that. They had been doing some gardening in that area. They've since removed that so that they will maintain their existing lot line along that area.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and address council at this time?
I'm Allison Kenning. I've lived at 1048 Transit Road for about 40 years. I've lived in Oak Bay since there was a cow up there on, on Runnymede or Mountjoy. Council had to deal with that, too. I am opposed to this because of the heritage designation. I congratulate the owners on doing a beautiful job, a wonderful job. They should be proud of. However, they themselves say that they purchased the house without any, anything in place. So, if their plan was always that they could subdivide, that's called speculation, and that's not what heritage designation is for. When that house first came up for sale, I wanted it badly. I would have loved to have it, but it was heritage designated, and it was dilapidated, and I could not afford it. That was, that's the deal. I couldn't afford it. It was left for someone who could afford it. Many people came along looking, and the price kept dropping, and that was because developers and people like me went, heritage designation dilapidated. I am thrilled about their suite. I would love to have them see a couple of suites. Perhaps they could be allowed to turn the, the old garage, the, over the swimming, swimming pool area into a carriage house or something. I would, I would have no problem with them having a couple of suites to help support ongoing, but that's it. And as other, as many people have said, that's not increasing housing density. A lot allows one more wealthy person to have a nice house, and they can find it somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for writing down your name. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak? Don't be shy.
Hi there.
Good evening.
Pardon me. My name is Gary McDougall. I live at 961 Runnymede Place. I lived there for nine years, and I'm opposed to the subdivision. One of the big reasons I'm opposed to it is we live in a very special place in this world. It's the type of place that when you move in... It's the type of place that, when you move in, and you get to know your neighbors, and they become like family, and you meet for Christmas, and we meet up with our families for Super Bowl, and a lot of those neighbors have spoken tonight, and I'm very proud to say that I live in that street. I don't know the developers. I'm so pleased with what they've done to that house. The house is beautiful now. It was an eyesore when we moved in nine years ago. I'm really nervous speaking here, and I'm very nervous speaking in front of you. This isn't my element, but I feel so strongly for my neighbors, especially the Berrys, who I think, if you've been in their backyard, maybe you haven't, but their backyard is so beautiful. And to imagine a house towering over that backyard and affecting them, they've been there for years, and I've heard Brian say and Celine say that they'll have to be dragged out of that house, and I couldn't imagine what they would have to go through if there was a house put in that place. So I'm opposed to it, and I ask for your help to protect our street and the specialness of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you just write down your name as well, so we have the correct spelling? Thank you. Next speaker to come forward, please.
So I'm Russ Collins, and I live in Oak Bay, and I'm here tonight to speak as a resident of Oak Bay, and I want to talk to you about why I hope you will support the heritage revitalization agreement that is before you. This McClure-designed house at 2031 Runnymede Avenue is an iconic home, one that many of us have driven by and seen for years. It sits at a bend in the road, is hard to miss, with its white stucco exterior and port crochet. Over many years, this home has sat in disrepair, and I believe that wouldn't have taken many more years for the house to become beyond fixing. This house was under a heritage designation during this time, and yet the house was year after year becoming worse due to neglect. My point being that a heritage designation is meaningless if no one comes forward with the money and the vision to repair, rehabilitate, and bring back to life a house like this one. Designation does not magically mix or magically fix the house, let alone keep it in good repair. An HRA, on the other hand, can in fact ensure that the house actually will be looked after and maintained. We need this HRA to secure the ongoing upkeep and maintenance of this historic home. The owners of 2031 Runnymede have done an amazing job of bringing back and restoring the home, as well as improving the grounds. In this instant, the request to create a new lot of almost 13,000 square feet allows the heritage home to remain on a large piece of property, almost 42,000 square feet, an almost unheard of property size in Oak Bay, at least in South Oak Bay. The legislation providing for heritage revitalization agreements was implemented for exactly these situations, allowing the municipality and the owners to mutually benefit from the agreement. I lend my support to Bruce and Anne's application and encourage mayor and council to approve this proposal. I feel that HRAs are the key to keeping our heritage homes and buildings around for future generations to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next speaker, please.
Sorry, you need to push the button one more time. There we go. Thank you. My name is Nancy Wilken, and I live in both Oak Bay and Victoria. I'm one of the lucky people that live on Romney Road, where I pay taxes to both municipalities. It's a pleasure, and I would like to support this application. This is exactly what the heritage agreement is to do. It's for mutual benefit. The municipality gets a benefit in terms of long-term care. Having a covenant, having this protected forever, it just, I keep seeing that as the benefit, and you've seen the level of care. I have to tell you, we call it the money pit. That's what we call it. But Bruce and Anne have put everything in there. The person who talked about the rent would cover it, it's millions of dollars that have been put into this house. I didn't see any of the neighbors helping fix it before. So the municipality has an amazing heritage home on an acre of property, and the benefit is the subdivision. And the size of that lot, if it was in Victoria, that would be two or three lots, not one lot. So the lucky person that gets to live in Oak Bay and have that size of a lot, I fully support this development. I would like to have seen these neighbors out when the Mount Joy development took place, and Mike, you know, got to blast the whole thing and build his house. You didn't have a siting and design control over that property that we look at, but you will have siting and design control over this. So mutual benefit, I see both for the municipality and a benefit for Bruce and Anne, which is well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Williams, 856 Falkland Road, moved in in 1975, had a long-term interest. My question is very simple. If you approve this, what happens to the property that was supposed to be all kept in basically what is right behind us, as is? If you have this go through, that's going to become just another house with another lawn and another stuff behind it, and I don't agree with that at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you just also just write down your name? Thank you. Nope, I thought you were coming forward. Anybody else coming forward to speak to council? You just have a second, why don't you take the second seat up here, so you can, and you can wait.
Hi, Jan Mears. I'm a resident of Oak Bay, and I'd like to support the comments made primarily by Russ Collins, because I think an HRA agreement, and I've spoken in favor of these in the past, is the only way that we can preserve these wonderful, larger homes that would otherwise disappear from our communities. A piece of land like this one, in the midst of a developed, built-out community, only has value if a house is run down to a developer, and we would see four or five brand-new homes on this, on this kind of property, and we would lose the benefit that we now have with the restoration of this wonderful property. We cannot expect private property owners to do what has been done here. The amount of work that went into preserving and restoring this home, and if people haven't seen it, I think it's well worth viewing this beautiful home, and it's a shame to hear the neighbors speaking in the way that they have, because I think the preservation of this home is to their benefit as much as any of ours. I walk this, these streets all the time, and I don't think that the, that we want to see a lot of change, but at the same time, we have to accept that change is going to happen, and people cannot be expected to restore these homes without some support. And we should not be talking about them in the disparaging manner as if they're out to make a profit when they've spent so much money to restore such a beautiful place. So I think we owe them a great deal of support and hope that people in our community can see that this is the only way forward for us in Oak Bay if we want to preserve some of these beautiful old homes. We're going to have to be a little more creative in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Alan Lupin, and I'm the husband of Eva, and we've lived in that house for about 30 years, which is adjacent on the south side of the property that you're thinking about. I think this, I can understand this heritage bylaw, because we have another property which we have been asked whether we want to make it heritage, and for what reason? If that can be, if that heritage designation doesn't protect it from other buildings going on, I mean, why should we do it? So that's one point of view from an individual who happens to be in a, maybe a situation that relates to this a little bit. The other point is, you, I can see, it's an enigma, I'm sure for you, but I can see that if the development did not damage the area, and if all the neighbors were agreeable, which they would probably be in that case, that that would be a different kettle of fish. What you've got here now is, all the neighbors disagree, I mean, you've had meetings with hundreds of people who've been against, these are people in the neighborhood disagreeing with having this, this land divided, this heritage land, heritage garden. And I think also, there is a difference between a private couple wanting, as we had one actually that were ignored, who wanted to buy this property, keep its heritage designation, and not build anything else on it, keep it absolutely as it is, and renovate it, and they, people who could obviously afford to do that. So, but there's a difference between private people doing this and the developer doing this, and I think this is one factor where we see different modes, and it's obvious from these presentations that you've had today, that there are people who are akin or engaged with socially or business-wise with the developers, this is just not a private couple coming to you with the same project. So I'm against the, obviously against the, this development, and I hope you will agree to not, not allow it. I can see some discussion with the heritage people about this, too, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, my name's Robert Long. I live on Oak Bay Avenue. As you know, I'm interested in heritage, and on this one, I support both sides, which is a dangerous place to be. First off, designation has to be taken very, very seriously. No one designates a house lightly unless it's protected by NHCA, it can bring with it a sacrifice of some real estate potential. There are, of course, occasions when undesignating a property is justified, for example, to widen a major road or to build a new hospital, but the need for extra, need for densification is not itself a sufficient reason to break a trust. It will be invoked too frequently, and designation would become a promise which doesn't have to be kept. In other words, it would be pointless, and who would dream of designating a property for no better reason than commercial gain of the owner? But in this case, the owner deserves a lot of credit. So I see a possible solution. As we've heard, HRAs are more powerful than designation. They are negotiated between, as we heard, the municipality and the owner. In this case, what's missing is HRA control of the new property, so it is not offensive to the community. There is a solution there, I believe. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Anybody else wish to come forward to speak to council?
My name is Marion Cumming at 151 Sunny Lane, and I'd like to speak as a citizen with a degree of independence, because I am on the board of the Heritage Commission. And the, I just feel so very grateful to Bruce Wilken and Hillier for the magnificent work they've put into the restoration of their grand McClure home. It's really one of the loveliest in all of Canada. And at the same time, I do share concerns about subdividing the land, that I would like to support the ultimate subdivision of the lot on the north side, but I think there definitely needs to be a condition that the south side remain as the reduced garden of the vast garden that once did surround Largoe. And because of that, as I understand it, it would mean not accepting for the time being the proposed subdivision. Am I right in, perhaps I should frame that as a question? The, I'm just concerned that in future, someone, a future owner might plead hardship and say that the, that south side, which is a lovely garden now, thanks to the revitalization being undertaken by Bruce and Anne, but if future hardship is pleaded, I imagine it could ultimately be subdivided as well, and it ought to remain as a tribute to Butcher Gardens and the Butcher family itself, a lovely urban oasis.
So Ms. Cumming, I'll take that as a question, and I'll put it to staff, but I believe that the issue here is you can't ultimately, any covenant that's signed by two parties can't, you know, the same, the owner and the municipality in future can always reconsider that. Ms. Jensen, is there anything you wish to add?
That is correct, your worship. If a covenant designation, council does have the ability, or future councils have the ability at some point to uphold what's already in place, to amend it, to remove it, that is within the hands of council. In this particular instance, you do have a heritage-designated property. If future subdivision were to be proposed, it would be back in front of council for their decision.
So it's just, it's just we cannot bind the hands of future councils indefinitely by contract, so that's just, that is a limitation that we have in this process.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cumming. Anybody else wish to come forward to address council on this matter? All right, I will call for a second time. Is there anybody else who wishes to come forward to address council on this matter? I'm just gonna make sure I spoke loudly enough. I've just called for a second time. If anybody else wishes to come forward, anybody in the hallway, and if not, I'll call for the third and final time, if anybody wishes to come forward to address council. And I'll also make a final call. This is, just be reminded, this is the, public hearing is the final opportunity to provide council with comments prior to the potential consideration of this proposed bylaw. If there's any additional written submissions to be included in the public record at this hearing, you must provide that submission to the corporate officer there now, prior to the close of the public hearing. Is there any further written submissions? I'm seeing none. So this is the third and final call for public input. All right, so the public hearing is now closed. I just want to say thank you to everybody who wrote, and many, many people who wrote who came out tonight to speak. The input is always appreciated and very, very valuable in helping us make decisions. Now that the public hearing is closed, we can't have any further submissions or comments from the public, and they can't be accepted by members of council. Just be advised that should council need clarification or staff opinion on issues raised at this public hearing, or the information associated with the public hearing, council can request such clarification from staff after the close of the public hearing at the following regular meeting of council, when through reading of the proposed bylaw is being considered, which is the meeting following this one. With that, I believe we just need a motion. Motion to adjourn? Moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, unopposed, and just thank you all for coming. We're gonna take a five-minute break. We need to reset our cameras, and for people who don't want to stick around, you're more than welcome to leave at this time, but if you do want to stay- But if you do want to stay, please do. And we will be back here in five minutes.